I'd like to call the order of the Monday, May fifth, two thousand and twenty five Borough Council meeting. Can we rise for the invitation by Mayor Yerko?
Please join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Anyone standing for the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance. Can I take the attendance?
I'm the first in your council for a long enough that both costs were part of it.
And I wait down for a little bit of that. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda for the May fifth, two thousand and twenty five council meeting. I'll start with that.
I have a motion by councillor Richter in a second, by councillor Shaw. Any discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any of those? Motion passed. Better.
So we are now leaving.
What?
You wanna?
Yeah.
That's right. Okay. Feel like I'm loud anyway. There we go. All right. Um, we're about a week and a half out from our first Third Friday. I'm very excited for that. A lot of people have been emailing me. Um, this week is the final push for any vendors. So I usually get a lot the week before. So we're already at like almost fifty vendors anyway, but that'll be good to get some more since the street will be closed. So we have the room. I'm just really excited to get that all together. Uh, I hope to see everyone there. And we have selected our five students now that are part of our first mentor mentorship program with the high school. Uh, we've met with them last week and they're great. They're really eager to learn. They're gonna start working with the board and attending our meetings. And they're going to start working with the local businesses when it comes to Third Friday stuff. We're focusing on again event management, civil engagement, marketing, TV and video production for that and children and family activities. So we have a student for each of those sections and it's really great. We'll introduce them to their mentors this week. Um, assessments. It's been really quiet this year, which I'm happy about. Um, I usually get a lot of calls. I've only gotten a handful, which really means to me, I guess our system worked last year and our plan. Um, and that people are just understanding either now what the purpose is for our assessment fee and or just so that's fine too. Um, I have created, I had a few people. Uh, business owners get asked by other property owners to, you know, give some positive things about Saturday connects. So I created a nice little document that highlights all of our um things that we've done over the last five years and I've handed that out to several business owners to share with anyone who has questions. So and our board members have some too. The reauthorization committee met again last week. That was the second time we met. And we are now in the final stages of typing up the preliminary plan. We are going to present that to the full Saturday connects board next week at our meeting. And then we will have that to present to you all at your June sixteenth uh work session. So be ready for that in June. So we're moving along with that. And finally, our business bites. We did one back um February. So our next one now is going to be the first week in June. The exact date is still being worked on till the third or fourth. So I'll announce that on our socials, but the um business bites this time is gonna be talking about marketing services, like overall packages for small, especially for small businesses. Obviously, the larger businesses have somebody in a team sometimes to run it. But we do know that a lot of people ask for this. So we're having our new marketing agency Elevated Angle Media. They're gonna present that and actually show what they can offer these businesses. And especially businesses in the bid, perhaps, you know, have some some packages specifically for them. So we're hoping that will attract some people to that. So uh, I will, again, we'll be releasing information on that as that comes. That was just discussed last week. And that is it, because I'm really just in the final stages of Third Friday. So does anyone have any questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Penny Price. I'm your representative to the Board of Trustees for the library. Um, I know we're in May here, but I wanted to look back at two thousand and twenty four and let you know that four hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-seven items were with um borrowed from the library last year. That's almost half a million different items uh borrowed by our community from the library. Um, about seventy percent of those items were books. Um, but the other thirty percent were not books. So there's a lot at the library beyond books. Uh, the bulk of that thirty percent was were digital items and audio visual items. But then we also have the museum passes and the library of things actually snuck in at one percent this year as it's growing. And the other thing I wanted to make you aware of is we do have fully functioning now a wireless printing at the library. Uh, you can print black and white or color. You can print it remotely and pick it up at the library. You can be onsite at the library and pick it up. And it's very reasonably priced, fifteen cents a page for black and white and twenty-five cent a page for color. Um, so I know we're phasing out our printers at home. So it's nice to know um to have that option. And then I did want to share a couple upcoming events. So this weekend is the herb sale pickup on Friday and Saturday. Those plants had to be ordered in advance. But I do know there's usually a few leftovers uh uh Saturday afternoon if anybody wants to. And there's also a uh plant swap on Saturday. Um, then looking ahead, Concert Sundays in June, the library will be scooping on uh June fifteenth, which is Father's Day, and we're very much looking forward to that great um opportunity to be with the community. And then finally, uh, the Beer Fest is happening again this year. It's Saturday, the nineteenth of July, and it will be in the Saturn Park. Um, so let's hope for great weather like we had last year. And the dinner in white, which usually has happened in August, I believe they're moving that to September, give a little gap uh between uh the different events. And I think it might be a little cooler and the sun will go down a little sooner if we hold that event in September. So looking forward to that. Anything? Any questions for me in the library? Great. Thank you very much.
I've had a lot going, sorry. I wanna say thanks to the people that came out to the Earth. They came up and the public works group helped out. Made a big difference in a little spot, uh, a lot of railroad average. So that was, that was third. Uh, and kind of some problems that we need to fix more often. But that's uh, that was a plus. Uh, we are lucky enough to have the Salvation Army foster care and adoption unit right on our own Main Street Towardson and made foster care awareness month. So uh, gonna add running with some locals at the Broadbeater. So the little plug, it's pretty cool that they're here. They only have two offices in the state of Pennsylvania, Allentown and Towardson. So pretty neat. Uh, a reminder that May twentieth is the primary election. There's still the median vote. And I want to give an update on Concert Sundays because Dan Howden's not here. I uh somewhat begrudgingly chair the Concert Sundays Committee. Do you need volunteers? If anybody has any interest, because I do not want to be the chair anymore. I mean, I know. So I'll just tell you quickly what it is. June first is Community Day. Uh, which is uh the band called The Common Red, which includes, it's an eight-piece horn band that includes a couple teachers from Tawkesha High School. That's cool. And then June eighth is the Class of Eighty-four, the eighty tribute band that we got a year ago. June fifteenth is the Montgomery County Concert Band, which is the hundredth anniversary of uh Gershwin's Rhapsody in Blue. Go through that performance. June twenty-second is Chupiny Creek Band, Bluegrass, Country and Folk. June twenty-ninth is our second annual Latin night. So we're featuring KY Creek Show Band and having help to help provide payment there or mix of partners Towardson with uh Honduras. But it's good. July sixth is the thirty-ninth Annual Allentown Bay. Wait. If you really think about it, Allentown Bay is the oldest concert band in America and they're here in Towardson on July fourth every year. So that uh, a pretty cool tradition that we picked around. East Brandon revival is on July thirteenth, which is Americana and roots rock. July twentieth was the Perco String Band, which is a bummer span. And we're having that this year in honor of Mark Rosenberger, that's our favorite group and our was the longtime chair of the Concert Sundays Committee and he named the concert lawn after Mark. July twenty-seventh is the Wonton Supes, which is a sweet pop and modern big band and then wrap it up with an Oscar, the Chico's Vine, which is the WMMR House Band. So it'll be a fun summer. June first through August third, every Sunday seven o'clock. And then the only thing I'll mention is um, which Sarah might touch on, but of publicly just that the police chief search is underway. And we're making progress, but in the meantime, I have to give a shout out to Sergeant Lukens, who's put in a position that he nor us were expecting and he's doing an awesome job. So thank you, Sergeant Lukens. We really appreciate your stepping up. That's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the stats for this month uh for traffic stops, we conducted two hundred and thirty-seven. Which is a pretty good number for us. Vehicle crashes, we had nine crashes. One of which had an injury, four of them were reportable. So the car said to be towed. Uh, we had seven arrests. We had a hundred and fifty-six public service calls. Fifty-eight assist other agencies. And a monthly total, we had nine hundred and sixty-seven calls for service, which averaged twenty-three incidents per day. Year-to-date total so far is three thousand four hundred and fifty-nine, which is a twenty percent increase over last year. Majority of the calls are still coming in between eight in the morning and midnight. It's about the eight and split. Three hundred and seventy-two between eight and four going to bay. Oh, three hundred and sixty-four between four and midnight. Year-to-date total, we had twenty-seven arrests. Which is a twenty-nine percent increase over this time last year. And then other things of interest, Reliance Road is now reopened. Which everybody was aiming for. Our community department checks has decreased the number of complaints we got in the vein of work on or any reports of any damage. I attended a forty-hour supervisory course this month. That was interesting. I enjoyed that class. We received numerous traffic complaints about juveniles on bicycles in large groups, which I'm sure everybody has heard of. The wheelie gang going down the center of the road. I have personally spoke to the local district justice. We came up with some ways to intervene. Uh, most recently, some income and arrests had to be made because one of the juvenile one after the officer, when he was talking about not being in the middle of the road. So we're working on that. There's been a couple other major incidents this month that required a lot of manpower from the officers. And I am very proud to say that everyone everyone really kicked in and put in a lot of time to make sure the community remains safe. And the borough was protected as a whole through the couple incidents. And we're still working on our mandatory training. And we have about a quarter that completed through here.
Any questions?
No, just thank you.
Thanks, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yes, so I just finished my report up today. I didn't have it, but that'll be in there for the tone. I'll just talk a little bit about where we've been doing most of our work. So we we lost seven hundred and forty hours of work last month and four hundred and twenty-one of it was in the park. Uh, we did a lot of uh, we did sculpture, got that part done. We don't have sculptures up yet. I think one of them come be right before conference signing the right after it. Uh, we got trees on order that we're trying to get ordered anyway. Having problems with trees. So uh, the five trees included, that sculptor door, I mean, that that is completed. Uh, we did a little extra, removed the cat down there with rotary sign when we know it popped that wall of the corner. So uh, wasn't a way to get plates, we downlit the block in front of the wall on the road. So that was a pretty neat, good job. In fact, the only one did have the half code and uh, we did a lot of seeding. We had a lot of areas we disturbed in the park for the last two years. There are some projects. That involved then reseeded again, or it did take. Yes. That's uh completed. We did have uh two van shell builders. Started a lot of way, I think that all we did repair them, but not out there yet. We went, probably shiny ones, but they're too early. Uh, we did store in the pool. We started last week and right off the bat, we pulled the first couple off. We found a not a major repair, but a bigger repair than what we would do in power. Uh, part of the zero entry, we walk, give you a picture of the top lot one. That had a stand and that twelve feet wide. Thought blue tile where you come in for twelve inches wide. So um we could call our usual guys, go on the pool first. And uh, they got a quote to we pretty quick and uh, we already been turned out already. Have to repair it. We had to have to get a little bit of skirmish to take care of in the upper pool, but that's that we'll do without. Then walking down with two months. And uh, they have a lot cured up for Third Fridays. We, we do have three or four late trail on on order pickup for uh Conference Sunday or for uh third parties. Do we, do we want to put our lefty board out what you do before that that will be closed and try and put that out? Other than that, that's all I have. I think I'll have a question.
Question? Steve, what's that mountain stone or charred in bottom?
It's not wheelchair. Uh, in this area. Actually, he's, he's got it all in down. Actually, we're holding up now. Can you use that area that now friends may use? What area? Everybody is doing the chip and wheelchair.
Good inch here or a little bit. I know that you're good here. I don't play that period. Wow. The hanging back is a long. Last year, it seems like there's some of the uh watering, whatever system we have, we're not purging correctly.
Well, we also had problems with nasty saber and watering. We uh switched to a different couple this year.
Okay.
So uh
Oh, wasn't happening.
There, there may have been a few that weren't spraying, but uh
I assume they're going opposite to why they did.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't last very long. They had last year. So we tried a different dinner.
Okay.
Yep. And we'll be getting a bike though. That that we, or even, or even more, don't use before that to start that. Forty, not that. Fuck, but it's wild. Can you look like the there's a slip to me.
Yeah, hi, I'm filling in for John Terente this evening. We, as John submitted, the Slithery Report, the Borough Council. I'm too many privileged, but there's one item on there that is not published that may be of interest to the public. It's the um relating to a public contract. The um public contract for this horse sludge removal is uh coming up for renewal. The sludge bid specs have been issued. They were advertised uh um beginning on April seventeenth and the bids are due by May thirtieth and they will be open on May thirtieth. And there's something else in the Slithery Report that can be discussed publicly, but if you have any questions about the bid specs, I can entertain them.
Question?
Early. Are in putting the rules up here. Um, no, I was up for you tonight. Um, the big thing right now that's going on is we're preparing for summer recreation. Um, so we're working on getting our seasonal staff up and going. So we have a special orientation with them on Saturday. Where they'll come in and learn how to walk in and out, uh, get a core of the facility, get a beard. Uh, we'll get all the people to see it. We have about twenty three or twenty-four staff hired for the summer. So they'll be working not just at the check-in and check-out window that we bring me is at the pool and then across the street, also at the park. Um, so they'll be busy hopefully this summer. We also were able to find a real adult, which I'm very excited about. Will be uh operating as a supervisor primarily on the weekend. Um, we gave some of the work and also myself to compete as we spent most of our summer last year. So we also have a convention vendor, a little bit more whales will be there. Uh, we're very excited to have that. Everyone knows, but I love that they're having a partnership. So that will be installed. Uh, the open road season may be twenty-four, which is Memorial Day weekend. Uh, we are not doing the four to eight schedule for the week, but like in garden school, don't be open in twenty or twenty to twenty-six, Memorial Day, that Monday will be closed for the following weekend. It will be open Saturday, Sunday, it will be closed. And then we'll open road season that next Saturday. The four to eights are uh hard difficult to schedule uh for lifeguard and for our staff. And we really don't see a big turnout. Uh, we can still be with the four and four. So we're gearing up. Uh, we'll have a last push here for future classes. We did fall off like I thought when our incentives kind of stopped, but I think last year we worked the Friday before Memorial Day and I was given the counter all day. Uh, it was basically had a line through lobby. So I'm hopeful that that will be our experience this year as well. Uh, we're finishing up the uh spring boot camp program and yoga program. Um, we are not moving summer something for those. Uh, they'll come back, I think in August. We'll be done with that. Especially, I think yoga will come back in August and it will give me back after Labor Day, I believe. Um, but we had reached out for those two campers for Saturday. Uh, there were like fifteen of us. So we have a nice turnout in a loyal group that keeps coming people to really support it. Um, we've been working to transition for various events. Um, anything new that's coming in, going to them, they've been in here having office hours to kind of get our files situated. Uh, we have a dedicated department meeting coming from out cleaning up permits and doing some party meters, trucks for grass right now. Um, and trying to be staying up without standing from the old provider. We're wrapping up anything. We have a fifteen day notice that we provided to Cooley. We're wrapping anything up with them at this point and finishing all our big projects. So do like a big handoff. Uh, it's going really well. We really like them. Uh, we've had a lot of compliments on their work and how they work with the public. Um, and so I'm really happy with this year. So we did it there. The last thing that I've been doing is preparing for our big contract. Um, our contract is up at the end of this year. So uh, we help community with them. Uh, there's a lot of link data and that that we do in to prepare for that. But that's what I've been doing right now. We haven't got some meetings started, but then we're hopeful to have that wrapped up early this year. And I'm pleased with you.
Are we going to spend with like thirty?
Yeah, so Benny can Benny can change the name and kind of their company structure. It's the same person. Uh, it's the new name of the company is Dynamic Products. Uh, we are locked in with them. Uh, we were working out, so it was like long, but it changes for our contract, but everything is like set to go. Uh, there is some language that you thought you didn't work through with our insurance company, but otherwise everything is ready to build. And they did a better price. He gave like fifty thousand dollars for that. I'm very excited to tell us.
Any other questions? Anything, does anybody have any? He's wanting to find that. It looks like the uh cell software is almost at a hundred percent. Finally getting there.
It's been me. We came from like the key man ballpark. So getting it to like an updated ballpark was challenging.
This is a program. I have one thing to talk about. I'd say yours should be to pave the path. That's next.
Is that like a women's contest?
Uh, yes.
Open comments for a residential property or business owner? You have any recommendations you can come forward now? Well, we don't have right. We, we did pay because we're looking for a pocket in front of the house. Oh, uh, he's working at that?
Oh. He is one that I've already approved. So I wonder if I already
Yeah, I don't, I just didn't ever do. You know, I don't want to got mad at the rest and they try to get back to you guys. Somebody hit that ten and a bit. But every few years and like in the hole, it's going to be air filled.
Okay.
If I don't have, if I use my spot a lot and when I walk through the back and the alley and all, it's a little while.
Oh, or if you didn't already drop your
Yeah, she's she's there.
She's her back. Do you have a photo of her?
Uh, neither, like it's giving them or what they just send you like these maybe all.
We'll have her get it from the next Thursday.
I'm sorry?
We'll have her get it from shop today and then we'll get a contract to do a fee.
We'll get you taken out, I'm sorry.
But well, two other problem was we didn't really know what to do. And then the Chief of Police told us they had the borough matters and the borough told us they pollution matters. So basically we felt like we were just being put and I'm sorry, you know, to say it that way, but what, you know, I remember two years. Very busy streets. They, they, they do the wah-wah thing and if I'm out of my bar. It's like they're not forbidden to go to the store for, for a half an hour. You come back, you know, it's fun, it's fun. And it takes me for every day.
He uh, I don't know what's the problem. And then what do you expect to name that? But the city D.
Well, yeah, she has COPD, like she has that, but uh
We don't need a reason. Always just
Actually, we, we rushed it. Like, yeah, if you want to go into health issues, he could use too, but we're sad part of just getting more, you know, but
We'll get you taken care of. Sorry for the whatever.
You're in, Laura, take care.
Where is the best?
Okay, Laura, I'm playing it out. The what? That's a lot of this. But to some reason, I'm really, we put it on, like, the net was someone right here, where it's put it on and then another game. I appreciate it. I didn't.
The other comment.
They went to the right. But we're wanting to know you generally for any. Been a motion.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, uh, make a motion, uh, motion made, the thorough have participated in the lateral process to determine that employee X shall be terminated from employment effective immediately.
I'll second.
Is there any color? There's a motion by Paul Forshaw, and the second by San Diego. All in favor?
Aye.
You approve? Motion. You probably have been on things about in front of town with you. And I get a motion to withdraw.
It's a president, I make a question. I think I'm on my best crap there.
There's a change of the rule, well, I'm gonna do it soon.